Mike's on.
I thought it used to just come down here and then that way. It never went this way and that way. Okay. Let me give Libby a couple more minutes.
Did you see?
Probably coming from Greenfield. She just pulled in. Okay. Andrews here.
Who?
Look at these changes here.
Okay. Now, I will discuss it there. Please rise for the place of allegiance.
Maybe I was just waiting for you to sit down.
Alrighty. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alex, did you take roll call form?
We almost match.
Brian.
Here.
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 Chris.
Here.
Here.
I declare we have a quorum. Okay, council to consider approving minutes. Can I get somebody to approve the minutes from May first?
May first, two thousand twenty-three minutes as written.
All in favor? I oppose. The eyes have it.
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. Girls gotta go a little quicker. Okay, I need somebody to give a motion for to prove the minutes up for May second.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, special meeting minutes for May second as written.
A second.
All in favor? I oppose. The eyes have it. All right, going, moving on to new business council to discuss options for the parade route for the Mount Vernon Mount Vernon Optimus Club Annual Ball Day to be held Saturday, June third, two thousand twenty-three. Steve?
Do we? Right. So Steve and I had a meeting a little bit ago. My concern was we can't close eastbound traffic on Ohio, Michigan. Him and I went over. We printed a map for everyone. We both agree that this is going to be the best course of action. Coming in on Stat Street is the only thing, but that's at the tail end of the parade. So I'm going to have an officer stationed there. That's going to leave stat open to Merrill and then we're going to send everyone north on Merrill to Ohio or Michigan to bypass the parade route. And that'll give us eastbound traffic that's that's open. No cars coming through. That was Steve and I's collaboration on on the way. Me personally, for public safety, felt that it would be best and for Mount Vernon that they could still get in the neighborhoods and families could still have room to be able to see their kids in their on their floats and parade and all that. If anybody has any questions, adjustments, I'm happy to go over it, but we talked very thoroughly about it earlier.
Do we need to let him? And I know that we're closing stat for a few minutes because that's their route.
You know, I don't, they're official routes from two thirty-four over nine and up.
Okay.
That's in dots official bypass route for all the construction. So I think we need to let the main street owners know that it's going to be closed for that hour, hour and fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Nine, nine AM. I mean, most people aren't even there and open yet, but I still think we need to put out a public notice just so they know.
Okay.
And then other than that, it's going to be a pretty fluid map to where we're going to have barricades open and closed at certain times. Just to get the parade through and we're going to try to keep traffic going the best we can because God knows traffic in Fortville is a mess right now.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the parade route?
I make a motion to approve the revised parade route for the ball day.
A second.
All in favor? I oppose. The eyes have it. Thank you. All right, just the second on new business is discuss the Optimus Club field field usage agreement. Tanya?
Did you, did you get a copy to Steve with this? This included some of the changes that you had came back to us with when I sent it over there originally. I think it was the thirty to sixty day on the termination notice. We changed to thirty day. Well, first of all, whatever for spring and summer, we're just going to leave it at no charge for you, I think, is the general consensus here. But we need to look at nailing down the the agreement after that from that point on. And that's what the fees and everything that are written down here. Everybody gets a chance to look at that. The, as far as the fields were concerned, the field maintenance, he takes care of all that. So your only responsibility is just the lining as it was before. So you don't have to really, and he said there wasn't much to repairing anyway because it usually didn't happen, but it would only be for your use if there was something that was damaged. So we took that part out. And then the this period of the agreement was to renew on January first. Unless either party provided notice on or before December first of the previous year, it's intended, it terms to terminate the agreement. Yeah. If you intended to terminate, you have to do that by December first. And the new agreement would be for January first. And I changed your maximum number of days to four days a week and one weekend day. And this is stuff you can, you guys can talk about and see if that's something that's will work for you. And then the final schedule needs to be test by March thirty-first for the spring and summer and then July thirty-first for the fall season. So we have that scheduled to work off too, and that would be games and practices both if you intend to have any games. And yeah, the, and I explained to you what the park fees were, that any outstanding park fees. I guess there's some outstanding fees for the community center that have not been paid. So that's part of, we need to make sure that they're paid weekly, your regular field fees when you, when you do start this agreement, which would be in the fall. You paid him when?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's something we can do if that's the case, that's fine. But it would just be the filled feeds that we didn't put none of the community center in this. This is just a field agreement. So. Okay, so you've talked to Angie about taking the Saturdays out.
Hey, Steve, I probably need you to speak in the mic. I'm sorry. So.
Yeah, I emailed about them. I guess it was probably about a month ago when I got the invoice. There was no, we didn't use it Saturdays. We only used it week, weeknights.
Okay, did, did anybody let anybody know that?
We weren't able to rent it out to anyone else because it was on the books for the whole season.
Which was how many months was that?
Yeah, I don't know. You actually got a copy of the invoice in your.
Okay. Yeah, it was like eighty, four hundred dollars or something.
Oh, here it is. It's eighty, eighty, one hundred or eight thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and that's minus twenty-seven twelve discounts for the non-for-profit.
Yeah, I see that here at the end. So that's probably another thing, too. So when you, when you bring the fees into the picture for the field use, if you're not going to be there, you need to make sure you let somebody know because you'll get charged for it, even if you're not there.
I'll go back and look, but so I'm pretty sure we, we love knowing we're using on Saturdays.
Yeah. You, if you, if you've contacted somebody, you have something in writing that says that, then we'll, we'll, we'll get the Saturdays taken care of that way. I mean, I think that's fair. But the fees will stay this, stay the same. That'll be for the fall season, anything moving forward.
So we're, so what we talked about before about the the labor or donations, we're not doing that anymore. That's off the table, I assume.
The, 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 well, that's what we wrote in here. This still is in discussion. These guys are looking at it too. Some of the, I don't know if you guys have all looked at it, but in order to get priority for the field, then the in-kind, the in-kind donation is what we're looking for, for priority. Otherwise, it's just scheduling with everybody else. But it wasn't specific on what you wanted to do, and that's why I asked you if you guys were playing games out here because you're not using the concession stands now because you don't play games. If it were me and you had the people, I'd open it during practice when people were here. You guys could make some money off of that, too. But I know you're not playing games here, so that that makes a big difference in whether you use the concession stand or not. So it's not being used because of that.
I mean, I think the community consensus is they would like to have games there. I mean.
We would like to see games there, but that's why I said you didn't schedule any for this season.
I know. I don't want to go backwards, but we don't know why we didn't have games here, but that's neither here or there now, but I don't know. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll stick to my board. I just, it's just, it's confusing on why we go from, you know, I understand that there was a changeover from previous that we used to talk to Heath about donations, which that's, that's in the past too now, but if I'd have known that going into it, I would have approached to myself, or it may, it goes both ways. So approach us if you need donation or whatever you might need to update or whatever. I mean.
Well, that's, you know, we're trying to avoid that by doing this in this agreement because the, the conversations that happen that, that nobody knows about or can't remember or weren't in writing, you know, we need to stop that. So it's not like that. But it does, you know, obviously it didn't happen the way it happened in the past. I don't know if that's the reason why you guys changed the way you did the scheduling, but we never still really got a schedule, just a, a cut out of time when you guys wanted to use the fields. But if you have a schedule, which I'm sure you guys probably, do you do that? Once you guys get your teams together, you have a coaches meeting and schedule out the season, game times and stuff. I mean, that's something that we need to have for us to be able to, you know, share the field if it need be, or if you're going to use it, we need to know that. Just so somebody else isn't out there doing something if you guys are going to be there. That's the priority for a part of it. I just, my whole thing is, and I'm just saying this for me, I'm not speaking for everybody up here, but personally, if because what you guys charge those kids to play, I just had no idea that you were, you know, charging that kind of money.
What kind of money?
The fee, the hundred and twenty-five dollars or whatever.
That's a lot of money?
I think it's a lot of money because I came from a day when you didn't pay.
I know. I understand. How long ago was that?
Long time.
Right, so.
Well, this is just my opinion.
I'm just saying like, we're not going to pay for it out of our own pocket. I mean, you're talking, you know, uniforms, I told you alone are, are over sixty dollars for one uniform. You got baseballs for ninety dollars a dozen. I mean, we're not making money on registration. I mean, that's.
I understand all that, but what I'm saying is, is that if these kids were only paying forty dollars to play, I wouldn't have a problem with did not charging you a fee bill, but that kind of money like that, I think it's, I mean, it's, it's a lot.
We're probably the cheapest around, I, I believe.
You might be, but this used to be a rec league, so now I get to start into a travel team. Is that what?
No.
You guys are trying to move towards the travel part of it?
Oh, yeah, we're, we are, we have a separate program for travel to adapt to that so that we can keep our kids in our community versus them going to play for OIO or Fishers, which I have nothing against them, but if our kids are in the community and they have a travel program in the community, why not offer that to keep the kids in the community? I mean, it just, it makes sense.
So right now.
Totally separate from what this is.
So what I see is that we have a season here where nobody's playing any games out here. So we got kids from Fortville that aren't being served because we're not playing any games out here. That's what I see. And, and I also see that you, the sponsorship part of it. I'm not trying to beat you up here. I'm just telling you how I feel because this is, it's, it's passionate for me, too.
Especially for me. I mean, my kids aren't even anymore and I'm still involved, so that, that, that tells you something.
And, and, and good, and that's good. And I'm sure everybody appreciates that. I'm not saying that you're not appreciated, but I'm sure that there's not a business in this town that would not sponsor a team, and I don't think any of them, any of them were ever approached.
Maybe they weren't approached. I guess I told you guys last week that Gardeners Towing donated X amount of money for, for new fencing and stuff like that for Mount Comfort and we, we approached businesses for, Fox Garden donated their, or sponsored a team. I mean, we're, we're, like I said, we're volunteers too, so we can only go out and hit the streets for people when we, when we have time or the off time, but
It just doesn't seem like.
When we had to scramble and put everything in Mount Comfort this year, that took a lot of our time away. So that's the reason why we didn't play here was because of this contract, which is what I've stated several times, which is why you don't see games going on in Fortville.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else got anything else to say, but he can take that back, I guess, and see what, if you guys are good with that.
I have just a quick question. Are the kids mixed up on the teams like McCord's film Fortville kids on the same team? I get a lot of complaints about games not being played in Fortville.
I, I would expect that for sure. So like we've always done in the past was during, you know, whether it's the coaches meeting and they, we sat down, we have a list of practices where fields are available in Fortville, fields are available in Mount Comfort. It's up to the coach to decide which field he wants. If he wants Fortville or, or, or Mount Comfort, we leave it up to them. This year, obviously, we didn't. However, we don't know exactly what kid, we don't have in our system to know which kid goes to McCord'sville or or Mount Comfort, but you know, it, I think by itself, it kind of evens itself out. And that's why we always try to do half and half. We play half our games in Fortville, half the games in Mount Comfort off weeks to try to keep people who live here to play at Fortville and vice versa. People live in Mount Comfort could play in Mount Comfort, but doesn't matter. Either way, you're going to play at both fields at some point. That's how it's always been in the past.
Right. Okay. Did you have games out here last year?
Well.
You did?
Yeah, nothing changed up until this year. Like it, we've always split it. I tried to split it down the middle where half and half, but this is the first year that we tried to put every game in out company. Which is why, which is why we're built, we're trying to get the two new fields to know that we'll be ready till probably into fall or next year, but it still won't alleviate. You never have enough fields.
Right. Okay. So you're going to take this contract back, talk it over and get back with us?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, honestly, it comes back to, I don't want to waste anybody's time, but I can tell you that I'm not going to speak for my, the rest of my board, but I don't think they're going to sign with the, with the fee schedule on here, but.
But those fees on there?
See what they say.
Okay, do me a favor, rewrite it without the fees on there and then we'll, we'll discuss it.
Okay.
We'll go from there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, where are we at here? Okay, next up on this, the council to consider reducing the rental rate for the Fortville Community Center at the request of Fortville's best ATA summer camp. Tammy Parker, come on up.
Good evening.
Hello.
Thank you for hearing me out today. So I, I think you got some information, just general information from me. We're in a bit of a situation. Many of you already know, we purchased the building at four fifteen West Broadway back in October. And still working on getting our drawings and our permit and getting the renovation completed on the inside. We were hoping and planning to be there by our summer camp. That was our goal, but that's not the case. So we are hosting in some weeks, we have seventy campers signed up. We've had between, between fifty to seventy, all eight weeks of summer. We've consistently grown each year. We've started out with probably fifteen or twenty kids. Most of you've seen us around town. So this is our biggest, biggest year yet, and we have calls every day. People still trying to get in after we're sold out. So we're also sold out for next year's after school program. So our goal is obviously to expand this program, but we're looking for a place that we can use for hopefully the month of June. I don't know whether we would want to do maybe a week to week, or if we want to do like a contract for the whole month, or I guess I'm coming to you to see what, I know there's a daily rental rate for that, for the community center. I don't know if there's a way to kind of give us a long-term rental rate, something like that to kind of help out a little bit. So that's, that's, that's where we're at. Our campus seven thirty in the morning drop off till six PM. Pick up seven thirty's early drop off, so we'll get campers from seven thirty in the morning until about ten. Camp itself is ten to four. So we'll run activities throughout the day. They do martial arts class. We have once we get to our new location, we have a class set up with a dance program there to include dance as part of that. We have arts and crafts. Just providing a lot of opportunities and activities for our kids around, around Fortville, so.
That's. Do you think there's a possibility you may not need it for the whole month of June?
I think there's a possibility. We're, I mean, I'm supposed to have my drawings tomorrow and we're going to expedite the permit. So you guys probably have more experience in that than me as far as how long that's going to take. I think the work, I mean, we have, we have to add a bathroom, which is probably the, the longest part of it. The rest is just electrical and drywall, paint, you know, stuff that needs to be finished up, so. I, I think a couple of weeks of work, but.
So would you rather pay by the week instead of the month? So they.
I'm open to whatever is, the council feels is fair and, and works if, if that works for you guys. So I would, I would do weekly. I could do the month of June and then see where we're at. I'm willing to do, do either one.
Okay. What do you guys think?
I'm looking, okay, so you, you need it for the month of June, Monday through Friday from
Seven thirty to six.
Seven thirty drop off. What's the pickup?
Six PM. Six PM.
Six PM, okay.
There's nobody on the schedule for June.
Is there anybody? Okay, nobody on the schedule for the month of June? And no, no weekends?
No.
Okay. And you'll do the cleanup?
Yes.
Bathrooms.
One of our, one of my big, I guess, things that we do, we, we go to all the parks in town. We go, we travel when we can. We go to Parks Pendleton. We've been all over, but my personal goal each time we go somewhere is that we leave it better than we found it, and we teach the kids that, too. So we, I know we see Heath out at the park all the time, but we pick up sticks, we pick up trash before we leave every time. So that's our goal. But yeah, we'll take care of the building. We'll any maintenance or not maintenance, but.
Because that would be, that would be, that would be perfect, that we don't have to send somebody over to.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
Make sure all the cleaning is done. I mean, we'll replace supplies, you know, as needed as far as.
Supplies, okay.
If, and I, I, I've talked to Heath that once in a while, if there's any volunteer opportunities that our kids could do, I mean, we can't put them to like actual work, but.
They won't want to paint the, the roof on the. Oh, I got, I got a power washing, I got some power washing out there. It needs to be done. Okay, the discussion will be.
There, do we decide on what that reduction in cost is or is that?
I don't think, I think she just wants to pay, what, five hundred dollars a week?
That's.
And Joe says not scheduled for anything.
Yeah, so it's a win-win.
And if somebody wants to schedule it, they're going to schedule it after six PM. And you'll have the place clean, so.
And I would talk to, I mean, whoever, I don't know if it's Heath or whoever, but as far as what we could leave there, make sure it's put away, or we'll do whatever we need to do. Make it work.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the reduced rate for the ATA summer camp program at five hundred dollars a week through the month of June. And then to be extended if need be.
Okay, great.
A second.
All in favor? I oppose. The eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council to consider approving of MS four general permit compliance assistance contract with Commonwealth Engineering Company. Ken Cross. Come on up.
Hey, guys. So, back in, oh yeah, I guess it would be early March, I was getting our general permit ready for the annual report for the year. And the engineering firm that we normally use, Tryad, decided that they were going to cease help with us. So at that point, I've been looking for another firm for a specialist on hand. That's where I've come to. I'm going to wealth as the one I like to use, but I need to come to you guys, you know, to prove for the money, so. Brady, if you want to come up here, talk about it a little bit.
Just kind of a reminder, again, my name's Brady Drier with Commonwealth. And MS four, what's that stand for? That's be municipal separate storm sewer system. So the town of Fortville were basically regulated under this program like many communities in the state just because of our urbanized area with the city of Indianapolis. Yeah, the, the other part of it is, is the fact that we have storm sewer outfalls that discharge the waters that can be impaired for different things like bacteria and what have you. So with that, this kind of is a refresher back in the mid two thousands. That's what I then came knocking on our doors and said, you've got to comply with these MS four requirements. So at that time, it was under what's called permit by rule, and the reason that Kenny reached out, talked a little bit with Joe is that the states changed how they do the permits now. It's what's called a general permit, and there are a lot of new requirements in there, and it's kind of a a restart, if you will, of our program. The US EPA have been asking I then for many, many years to convert to this general permit type approach. And with that comes changes to our program. So there's an audit coming up.
Yeah, June sixth.
Yeah, June sixth. So the town is falling behind on deadline. So when I then comes to town, we're going to talk to them and pre-negotiate those deadlines. So the proposal that you have before you is basically a good bit of running work. But the intent is, is that once we can get any here, you know, rolling, get the documents, steps and checklist, then it's something that the town will be able to. So that's kind of how we set up.
But Joe, have you had a chance to look this over?
I have looked this, and I will say, once Kenny started researching and looking for a firm to help him out, he has reached out to a few different firms and other communities around to see who they're utilizing nowadays and Commonwealth is the one that kind of rose to the top for him, and that's.
Yeah, I mean. New power uses them as well as English.
And, and the prices look very favorable compared to what we looked at as well. And you see there on page two, it's got to break down the cost, so. Alex, did you have an opportunity to look at this?
Very briefly.
Okay.
Are these prices, can we pretty much in line with what we were a pan?
That I can't answer. I do not know. I mean, I barely have enough time to get this done, let alone anything else. That's why I'm looking for a specialist to, you know, help.
Right.
With the documentations that I can't do, so.
I understand. I understand. We have the money in the account to pay for this.
Yeah, this all come out of storm water. So there's funds in there. And we just did receive, I think, another seventeen thousand dollars for the uh. I don't want to say it was the opioid, but it was the roundup. Yeah. So that don't help.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm sure Kimmy needs the help.
Yeah.
Well, this is what it's going to take to get us in compliance with I D M. I know they've changed some of their reporting rules and stuff and this will kind of get caught up.
It's a, it's a new general permit, so this is all. Re-advised like Brad said this year, so it's coming all online. And we'll be, you know, that brings us up to par with everything.
Any emotion to approve the?
I'll make a motion to approve the M S four general permit compliance assistance uh contract with Commonwealth Engineers Inc. My second.
All in favor? I oppose. The ice have it. Thank you. Thank you. Old business, council to discuss utility water request from old Fortville Road in Madison County. Uh, Jeff Ratliff Utilities Customer.
Jeff Ratliff. Uh, one of the guys, guys know, um, I do have one other resident that would be interested in water service. They don't want it at their house. They want it at their barn. So. The back would be where they would take it rather than down the road. It's only one other potential outside of that along the route that I've proposed. Um, just be myself. Mister, Mister Kraus and then uh another potential customer.
Mister Kraus is not on.
Junior.
Oh, does he live on? Okay.
Senior lives in a different, different location. Think last time Fred you were misunderstood when it comes to the easement. There's a fifteen foot easement at the back of Helmcrest subdivision. That is at the Hancock Madison County line. Then there's an additional fifteen foot easement on the Madison County side. So that fence that you were talking about has no bearing or effect on.
Has nothing.
On the easement that we'd be utilizing.
Okay, I was just wondering, everybody's trees were back. I mean, everybody's fences were back and his was bumped out. Everybody else's was back. I thought he just built a fence in the easement.
Right, but it didn't go to Madison County. That property owner wouldn't stand for it.
How does that, how's that easement worded, Jeff, as far as?
Well, that easement is uh allows you, the town of Fortville. To utilize that easement, just as Fall Creek Regional Waste utilized the same easement for sewer, um. Which is in the middle of the uh separates the properties.
It specifically says Fortville Water.
No, it says uh it's a drainage and utility easement. So as a utility company with permission from Madison County, you'd be no different than the electric company or. Gas company or any other utility.
I'm just curious to the way it's worded, because sometimes the way it's worded.
In addition to that, it's almost a moot point because the property owners along there will give me an additional fifteen feet on into their property outside of the. Public right uh, public um. Um, kind of say public, but the existing easement in order to get this line. So there's really literally no obstacle other than the town of Fort.
And cost. How much does it cost to?
Costs is relative. It just depends on, just depends on whether the town wants to gain new customers. You know, that's, that's, if if they don't want it, if they don't want to. Have any customers or don't want to bear any expense, that's, that's one option.
Have you been told of a cost yet? How much, how much does, how much does it cost to?
Well, I don't know what normal people pay, but we have the equipment and we got the pipes, so it's really costs is. The only thing that we would have to worry about is connection to the town's line and and how the town would want to do it.
Do we have a water line in that easement now, Joe?
Not even abandoned one?
What's that?
Not even an abandoned one?
Well, there's one out there that's, this to be to ban- abandoned, but that's not in the one you're talking about. That's in the one that Fritz is thinking about.
Right. No, I understand. I'm just saying that there's a pipe in the ground though.
Yeah.
That's my, my, my. My only concern is that we're doing something that. We start this and then this person, this person, then this, everybody wants us to kind of. Do this hodgepodge of bringing water here and there. And it's, 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 it's not the, the right way to do it. You know what I'm saying?
You, you can search for a reason to say no all you want. Just, just, just let me know.
Well, no, I'm not searching. I'm just saying that it's just not, as a town or as a business, I'm not sure. Uh, I'm just my thoughts.
It's not the only, um, it's not the only property that receives uh or that would be receiving water services outside the town limits. It's not necessarily a special thing. It's actually a pretty common thing. But then again, like I said, you, you guys hold the key. You guys are the, the key holders of the municipal water, right? So there's really nothing I can do unless the town of Fortville decides that they would like to allow someone to connect to a municipal water source.
Well, we also have to be considerate of our taxpayers' money and the cost to run water to someone who chose to move out of town.
I mean, I've never moved out of town. I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, you said you lived, you lived.
No, I've never said that at all. I said I own property in numerous places.
You said you were used to having water, though. You were used to.
So all the properties, I like to have water at, correct.
So you're living there?
Oh, no, I, I, I've not answered that question.
Again, I'm, I'm not interested. And if you ever sell that property or anything else and it's just another. If, if you could come up with a way that we can run the water. Down the street and everybody taps in, that's the only way I'd be interested. It's just a business.
Right, so the town of Fortville's position is that yet again, you wanted to deny me water service.
Not at all. It's not the same thing. Not at all the same thing. No, and I believe that you got your water at, at the home that you're referring to.
I'm sorry?
I believe you got the water at your home.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've never denied you that.
My deceased father got water before I did.
And, and I don't think the people of Fortville would be very happy with us if we spent. Over a million dollars to run a pipe so that you can have. I mean, have you been told how much it is? I don't.
Actually, I, I've offered to pay. That, that's what's so strange about any number that you're talking about. I've literally offered to run the pipe down the easement that I will be allowed to. All I need to do is worry about the connection to the town's line. I think you guys are making this far more complicated than it needs to be.
Spend a lot of money to get it out of the easement?
Yeah, several hundred thousand dollars.
I thought that's what we were already.
You guys said you got it. You abandoned the line.
And there's only two, you're only talking to your property and possibly another one. Doesn't make it, doesn't make sense to do that for.
Oh, no, like I said, you, you guys hold the key. I mean, like I said, you, you guys, you guys have the, the key.
Do we want to make a motion or just let this?
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement here. Just, yeah, we'll make a motion that will deny requests. Fixed ended across the county line.
I love it. Thank you. Somebody second it, please.
My second.
All in favor? I oppose. The ice have it. Thank you. Okay, Joe, go. It's your turn.
Okay, just a few quick items here. Community crossing uh projects is wrapping up our paving that we got through the uh state funding. Uh, the grant funds, we've got roughly nine hundred to thousand feet of sidewalks and some punch list items to finish up. And then uh we'll be done with that community crossings and we'll be uh. Paying those final bills and fortunately or unfortunately, we will be giving a little bit of that money back to the state because. We were able to get everything paved and it come in a little bit uh better price than what we really anticipated. And just to be clear, the funds that we got on the grant is to. Point A to point B, it could only be used in that area. So everything that we got funded for in that area was paved and taken care of. So those funds cannot be used anywhere else. So if there's any funds left over, then they do have to go back to the state. So with that being said, then our match money uh that we would have been using um would be available as well. So once we get all this finalized out, I'll see where we're at on our match money. And I know the council had committed doing another alley or so in, in. Town on the north side last year, so we can see where we're at and have some funds for that and maybe some other sidewalks and. Do some other little road projects. A little reluctant to do too many road projects, as long as Broadway's tore up and there's people running around, but uh. You know, if we can get into some of the neighborhoods or something like that, we'll see what we can do there.
Well, I think the only one that, this Leland that they came in discussing, I drove over there when it rained and it. It does flood out and I could see. It somehow in the past, there was sidewalks there and like you said, they. They paved because people probably were parking in the grassy area. They just paved it. Now it's all one level now.
That's part of the problem is. Same elevation in the street or maybe a little bit lower. So when it rains, it does pull a little bit and probably those little mud and stone and stuff.
Keep that on the top of the list. That might be, I don't know if we put a cap on top of that sidewalk to make it higher or. They have to dig it out and lower where it should be.
Typically, we dig it out and then we build it up.
Okay.
Put it a little bit higher. So yeah, we'll definitely keep that one in mind. It's on our list. Uh, the water treatment plant, I told you at the last meeting that uh. Um, they would be doing some training this week and hopefully pumping water. Uh, training starts tomorrow. Um, they're doing the back tea test on all the filters and piping and stuff that got in the plant. They've got two good back tea uh tests back today. They had a couple that did not come back good, but that's just typically the uh. You know, just with the way they took it samples. So they'll, they'll draw those again tomorrow. We should have two consecutive good tests and then we'll be ready to start pumping some water out there. So things are coming along, starting to look good inside. I know you won't be able to see that they've done a whole lot on the outside because they've been concentrating on the inside to get that. Thing actually operational.
They've got garage doors in that building.
No, they're not garage doors. They're, they're big uh. I don't know how to explain it. They're translucent. There, there'll be like metal with a crosshatch in the front, but then there'll be some translucent to let light and everything in.
Everybody keeps asking me and I'm like.
Yeah, the reason those are in there is because beyond that wall is where the big filters are sitting. So if they ever need to take them out. Or if we expand the plant and add more, that's the way they go in and out of there.
Makes sense.
Okay. And then um. Last Thursday, we had a pretty good meeting with um Renee Odom with the Chamber of Commerce. She came out and met with us. Uh, we met with N D O D and their project manager. And uh, they're going to get involved as far as. The, the road closures and try to help our local businesses. They're in a process of collecting emails for all the local businesses. Finding out when their uh delivery days are and anything like that that might kind of help. Plan around some of these. Problems we're having with traffic and getting people in and out. And then uh. Also, the uh contractor will be reporting back every week, every Thursday with an update on what's planned for the following week. So they can get that email out to everybody, get it on their website or their Facebook and then we can share it on ours and. Hopefully that'll be a good way to get the word out, make sure at least the businesses are aware of what's going on and who's coming up.
His in dot does it when I come see us once a month.
I a bass, I push in again and I just hear crickets. Nobody's jumping on board with that.
Yeah, sure.
It seems like um people are starting to figure it out. The way the roads are uh blocked and barricaded off and we're not seeing the crashes and are you seeing any that I'm not?
Bypassing south in the county and the county is taking the crashes.
Okay.
Of course, our officers. Time to borrow manpower because we are going north or south. Lately, they've been sad.
Yeah, we've been averaging one a day on Merrill Street, I think, before all this happened, before they closed Merrill Street down. And uh, we're starting to see a lot of. People that are just naturally coming in town or to take the bypass. They've, they've added some additional signs. I think it helps down there to McCord'sville. They've got the big whiteboard that says. Thirty-six closed ahead and trying to run everybody down two thirty-four. All the, the locals that know that they can get around or where they can get around. We'll put that out on the air, but they know how to maneuver to come through town and.
So it's weird down there at two thirty-four because the road close sign is on this side. Of the stoplight.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's not before the stop.
Why wouldn't it be before to make them go to, to turn right on two thirty-four? Because sometimes they're getting too far. It's a weird place to put it, you know, is that Veer off the three thirty-four? It should be in front of that.
Well, where they've got it sitting down there, is it actually blocking? Is it in the lane?
No.
So it's off on the median.
It's often, but it, but it's after, you know what I mean? Like it's after the stoplight. So now it's too late to turn right.
Right.
For the, for the truck. It's just a weird place for them to put it down there.
Their next stop in the first semi is nine north.
Right. Well, now, like I say, if you come. When you're coming from the west, they do have a big flashing board and that says. Thirty-six has closed the head, use two thirty-four.
Okay.
So that a bit, it's.
Where's that at?
It's uh back to the west a little bit.
Okay, alright.
I watched.
So that helped. I thought that was a weird place to put that barricade after the stoplight.
He was turning around, had all the traffic down.
Yeah, some of the trucks, they, I mean, we've seen a lot of big ones coming down Main Street and we got weight limits on all those roads too. So we're hoping that they don't tear them up before the project's done.
Were we still looking at speed bumps?
Yeah, I've got a, they're laid out on my desk. We've been calling around and getting some prices on them, so. I'm not, I'm not forgotten it. It's just.
I had somebody approach me from the um. B F W that was interested in working and taking care of their little spot out in front. Their little green spot.
Okay.
And I, that brought up, I wonder if there was any other businesses that would want to take care of their spots and maybe plant stuff and, or if that's something we'd want to do.
Well, most, if you're talking about the bump outs, they're already planted with everything. Um, Heath had his crew out there today weeding and. Cleaning the beds up, taking the cigarette butts and the trash and cleaning it out. Friday, he's got some kids from the school coming out too. Is it Thursday? Okay. Oh, that's right. He didn't. Yeah. So Thursday they'll be out and he's going to go get a bunch of mulch. They're going to work on Landmark Park. And they're going to dump some mulch in the public parking lot and let them work on the main street as well.
Well, maybe it just, maybe that's why they brought it up because they did, they, they thought it was being overlooked.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, we're usually on it a little bit earlier. I know that uh, you know, F A I used to uh do a. Big cleanup on Main Street as well.
Well, I was going to ask, like, I've already talked to yous. Maybe that's something the Tiff could do just once a year. And not make it a maintenance thing where once a year they, they hire a professional company, takes pressure off of our guys.
And that'd be a question for us because I don't think that we can do that. I think we can plant it, but we can't maintain.
Once a year, because it's.
Ongoing things like that. There's a Indiana Supreme Court case says.
We say you can't move.
I know, but. You could allocate shit, you know, you just can't use Tiff dollars.
I just was thinking out of the box to get it down because it's just, it just overworks uh Heath and all the guys to try to get it done when. Most of the businesses are paying money into that Tiff. Like, well, I, mine went up by eight grand. So I know that there's money going in there and uh. I was just hoping that they would be able to fund that just once a year, but okay. Say no, it's no.
Well, maybe the town could organize a volunteer day to go down there and do a, like the Main Street group used to do or the.
And we, we can do that. It's just uh this year with Broadway and everything else happening.
I know, it's been a mess, but yeah, I used to go down to help. Oh, I used to go down and help when the Main Street group had their workday. So I don't mind going down there and pulling weeds or pushing a broom for a day.
We did have a, one of the signs come down by the road track, one of the wayfinding signs. And I am working with the contractor to get that replaced. It's not under warranty. Uh, so it's something that we're going to have to pay out of our sign budget, but. He's uh working with us, trying to find. Better pricing from what we had with the contract. It's, it was quite high. Then we've also got one tree that happens to be dead in front of Libby's. And uh.
I think I'd have some connection.
We uh, I checked with them. I keep, I keep asking the question, is this one under, under the contractor, under warranty? Um, I'm not getting anything back. I actually reached out to the uh. Nursery where the trees came from. And the lady told me that those trees are not only out of warranty, they don't have anymore. We'd have to maybe go to Ohio or someplace to even find one at this point. Um, so I need to find out exactly what that tree is and start searching, see if we can find one. But the last time that uh. Libby, did you tell me that there was a ribbon on that one last year? I thought you did. And I, I told him that, that I thought it was part of the replacement list. And uh, it just got missed, but. They're not uh. They're not offering up the, they're not saying no either. So I'm still going to work on them. I've not heard anything from them. I keep asking. But if not, we'll get that replaced because it looks bad having that one dead tree there. I look better.
There is a lot of dead trees at the post office too and in our park. I don't know.
He's been working on that. You placed one of the trees and.
Well, I don't think we can do anything about the post office, all their dead trees that are in there. I don't know if we have to say something to them or.
Yeah, we can, we'll check with them. And I, I questioned some of them whether they're on the post office or if they're within the right of way. I will say that the post office planted them when they built the post office years ago. Um, they've never done well. They've been really yellowed and. And I think they just kind of suffered in that location. Don't know why. I don't wanna, it's in your way. It could be something in the ground or. That's probably why. Yeah, I don't. I'm not sure why, but those trees, they they just, they've suffered ever since they put them in. They just didn't look good, so I don't know. But I'll I'll check if they're within the right of way, then we can see about getting taken out.
All right, and then we do have. More trees that looks like it's dead in the park along that. The ditch area down by the basketball holes. Well, they saw one of them is on private property.
Yeah, the one is on private property.
There's three of them that.
A lot of those, they're walnut trees and they bloom, the leaves come out later. So they look bad now. They might start. Might be starting to leave out now, but they.
Mine just started.
Did it? Yeah, then they look bad for a little while.
Did you guys decide to dump the speed bumps or?
I'm still getting prices and shopping around. I did find.
Calls from people on stat.
When I know the chief had put out the uh speed limit sign out there, I don't know.
Usually it's a three or four days. It'll it'll stay charged. But it was gone in like a day and a half.
Oh, wow.
What was um, the uh, what the other thing is, when you turn down stat, it says five ton limit. How much does a semi weigh?
More than five.
So. I think if there's there's Amazon, Walmart, I've seen drive down there. They're not making deliveries. I think if we just. I don't want to get, I don't want to get a driver fired, but I think if we pulled them over and gave them a warning. And then. They they will get back to them that say, hey, we got to use the the. Go around. There's no reason for Walmart to be cutting through on a five ton. Cause that that bridge there, it's it's not rated for that that mountain, is it?
The county does the.
It's like a culver basically. I'm not sure. I'm not. I'm just saying maybe we should. We should probably. Do something about the big semis coming down that road.
Yeah, we got the weight limits on the roads. I mean. That's, you know, that's all we can do other than, you know, ticket on the warnings or however you want to handle that.
Right.
The issue we have is we don't have scales. The department doesn't have scales. We don't have, we can request log books. Because when you do a CDL inspection and a weight limit, you have to have certified scales. You have to check their log book. You have to see if they're loaded, unloaded. Um, so we could request from state police to have some of their motor carrier enforcement officers come up. But they generally won't do that on anything but a state road and where we're at, it's forty, seventy or sixty-nine. The only place you're gonna find them.
Okay.
Um, I have talked.
I didn't know what a what an empty semi would.
Five tons, but.
Yeah.
So the UPS truck when it's loaded. Um, you know, and without us having the scales to be able to go to court to prove that. There's no way that we're gonna be able to enforce that ticket.
Well, they could just give them a warning, pull them over a few times. I think though. They might get the hint.
You'd be surprised. The warning should have been the sign. To say, don't drive this way, but they don't.
Well, the warning signs are getting hung up on the railroad tracks.
Too, right?
Yeah.
Nobody pays attention.
Okay, it was just a thought that we would just call them over.
Some do, some don't, when they're loaded or.
Yeah.
But they won't know in a box, but wait until they hit a weigh station.
Is this?
Most of your drivers that have a CDL, they're aware of what they're.
Gross what they're doing. They're good, the the.
Well, Patrick, that's why that's the complaints I'm getting on staff. There's the semi shouldn't be there at all. Well, the the semis that coming into town to make deliveries, that's that's different. But these guys know better than they know that they're not supposed to go down stat. It's just. They're they're just being lazy and not going down Oleo and getting on the highway or something else. And I just, I just, I just get tired of phone calls. What I'm gonna do is just give them your. Let them call you. And then go from there. I just, I think we need to get done.
And I can tell you it's the same frustrations I have as well as the townspeople have. That you can put up a main signs, you can put up speed limit signs. And.
I I think we just need to give the semi drivers a ticket then. They just.
Raise my right hand and say, this semi weighed X amount.
You don't have to specifics, but they weigh more than five thousand. They're in violation. We don't have a graduated penalty that it's. At least not I'm aware of the if they're six thousand or if they're six tons, then it's X amount. If they're seven tons, it's X amount. It's if you're north of five tons, and I thought you said an empty semi. Is more than five tons, so then. De facto, they're in violation of the ordinance, empty or fully loaded. Maybe it would be different if we had a penalty schedule. That was based on how much they're over. But I don't think we have that. I mean, Adam or she, I if we don't have that and it's just five tons. And if an empty semi is north of five tons, then they're in violation and that holds up in court all day long.
But then what do you do with the local people that are coming to drop off stuff for the business?
There's an exception for deliveries.
Yes, so. What you're saying Alex is it's okay for us to write local ordinance infractions. For semis. While they're moving.
Sure, it just has to go to county court.
Mm hmm. Unless they're making a local delivery.
Yeah, absolutely. Hundred percent. You should be doing that. Otherwise, why do we have ordinances?
Yeah, because right now.
Freak an hour before he left that we weren't enforcing any moving violations on ordinance.
That that's, I think what what's being conflated there. No, that was something. Different that that Carmel did.
Saying and they didn't have.
Right. Well, no, that was different. The Carmel case was about the way that um Carmel adopted their. Speed limit um. Ordinance file, their speed limit ordinances and some other moving violations and rather than specifically. Been a while since I've read the case, but rather than specifically adopting um ordinances for the city. They just said. We adopt what's in Indiana code, what's in Title Nine, right? Court said you can't do that. You have to, there's a procedure and a process that's laid out in statute for adopting speed. So that's something different. The issue about moving violations in the town of Fortville. Goes to the ordinance violations bureau and Fortville, like. Many other towns that have ordinance violations bureaus, but not town courts. Or you are not allowed to run your ordinance violations for moving violations through the ordinance. Violations Bureau. You have to send that to the circuit court. You have to send it to the county. Lots of towns uh were not following that. So that was the Canower. Free Canower rub on that, that look, you you can't do this. And State Board of Accounts finally sent out a notice that if you're doing this, stop doing it. My assumption is that we stopped doing it, which was not to say stop enforcing town moving violation ordinances. It's. When you write those, moving violations have to go to the county. Non-moving.
Under the state. Statations.
Well, you can write it to the town code and it just gets prosecuted in the county. It it's done. I I I do the same thing over in Whitestown. I've. Done it up in Pendleton. Years gone by. I mean, I know that it's done. The prosecutor just has to find time to do it and you send it up and there's a way to. You know, Canower and I talked about having quarterly. Uh, dates with the county prosecutor and. You know, saving all of the. Fortville moving violations for a single thing. Either they have a deputy prosecutor do them or. You guys have me go up and prosecute or send an associate up and spend half a day in court and. You know, prosecute them, but certainly it's something to be done and. Um, but yeah.
I'll I'll check prosecutor courts and see if they are. They have flexibility in their schedule to do so.
I think we should still write them a ticket and let let them worry about it.
You're you're right, Chris.
What?
You're you're right. Writing the ticket is the town's responsibility.
Yeah.
That's administrative.
We don't worry about what they're doing.
I don't think that the town should. And the town's enforcement. Should base whether or not to write tickets or issue violations and our ordinances. Based on what we think or perceive to be the reality of how soon or how quickly or if those will be run through the judicial. So that's. That's a different branch of government.
That's what we're saying. I said I would check with the prosecutor, the judges. I know the judges from way back then.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, but there, yeah, we need to enforce. The 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 semi shouldn't be going down Stat Street, period, unless they're making a delivery.
Yes, Teresa. Yes.
Teresa working three thirty-two West Stat Street. So I would like to see the semi traffic stop. That's coming through. I understand local deliveries. I get that, but I am seeing Walmart and Amazon and. All kinds of other trucks that have no business going down Stat Street and should be following the designated end dot. Detour. And I've noticed the signs. I saw the twenty-five up that. That worked for me and I appreciate that, but I think that I would like to see consistent and meaningful traffic control. With the semis and with the speed. So if you can't get them for weight, get them for speed. And we have that weird little crook in the road right there. Someone's gonna end up with their car in someone's yard or front porch sooner or later. And I have talked with, I'm not speaking for, but I have talked with. The neighbors on Stat Street and most of us, everyone that I've talked to has witnessed. People slamming on their brakes because they don't see around the curb when the traffic is backed up and they have to slam on the brakes to stop because they see it. At the last minute, there are several households on Stat Street with young children. And we have a lot of people who park on the street and have to get in and out of their cars during this traffic. And um, I think it's just a matter of time. We've seen Merrill Street, you know, have. Problems where they had the crossing there, but it's just a matter of time. Before we see something happen on Stat Street too. So I would like to see something, especially with the semi trucks. And then you need to stop the speeding because. They are treating it like it's sixty-seven right now. They can't go through on sixty-seven, but they're coming down Stat Street at the same speed as they do. On sixty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Can we possibly put a sign up there at the? Um, in McCordville that says. There's no no semi truck traffic beyond this point.
End dot's got one.
They're still gonna come down that road. We just gotta give them a ticket. That's all there is to it. They're still gonna, they're still gonna go over that railroad.
They're gonna pay that ticket and they're gonna come back because they'll do it again.
Well, then don't.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
They'll end up getting, they'll end up getting fired. Uh, if if somebody has a CDL license, they get a ticket, they get another ticket, they're they're gonna lose their CDL license. They they need to just, the semi traffic needs to stop downstairs.
Well, I will say that if the truck drivers start getting tickets, they will. It'll spread throughout their company pretty quick. Don't go that way. Because we just got a ticket.
Will let everybody know, but the driver probably.
Yeah, and I know that uh, the. Uh, contractor that's working out here on the end dot project, they have gotten with all their truck drivers, even if they're hauling to another job. That if they speed through their work zones, that they will not be working for them any longer. And it seemed to slow some other trucks down as well. So I think. Once the word gets out to, you know, a few of the truck drivers, it'll get back to the people. In their same organization to. You know, find an alternate route or slow down or whatever the issue happens to be.
And a lot of those people just choose to not follow the, you know, they just make that choice.
Well, they just get a ticket. They get ticket. And then they lose their CDL license. It's it's packs life.
That was a question.
Okay.
Not by me, no.
The reason I ask that, I mean, you can get a speed bump on Amazon for seventy some dollars, that's a hundred and seventy dollars. I think some of the neighbors and some of the neighbors including ours. Probably chip in and get a couple of speed bumps if they don't have to be. Official through and not be serious. Because even though Garden Street shows it's closed. Plenty of others. They'll go down there. Last thing, he is really right. Turn around.
Yeah, we're we're actually pricing and Tanya had brought that to us at the last council meeting, some uh. A company that had some with some pricing and we're looking at some additional pricing. And I know the ones that. Right. Well, there's other companies. I think that they they do have them readily available. Um, and I think a lot of times that price, it looks like a really good price, but it's only for a six foot section. So when you start putting them together, the price goes up. And the bad thing is we've also been doing a little research on when you stake it to the asphalt. Then they end up tearing up the asphalt and then they end up moving and you have stakes that might puncture tires and then you have cars that go run fast and you. Create racket at night when people are trying to sleep. I mean, there's there's pros and cons both ways. So we're we're looking at it, but you know, it's not totally off the table by any means.
Thank you.
I know when I come down that road, I come down quite a bit and I go the speed limit and they line up behind me. So I.
It's a face card.
Yeah. Yeah.
And beat their horn.
Another, another. I think I think the sign that say cross traffic does not stop is it's. That's a good fix and I don't know that um we may have some on the shelf back there that we could. Take some of those intersections if there's some troubles like. That one, if there was an accident to kind of. See if we can start adding those. If we start adding a four-way stop, then it. Then we have to add a, you know, ordinance adjustment and stuff like that. And then people take a while to get used to it and then. You could actually have some crashes there till everybody gets used to it. And then when a road opens up and you take them down, then you could have crashes because people are used to it being a four-way, so. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it it might be. The cross traffic doesn't stop. That's a, that's a good uh, a good thought. And we added some of those. Adam can attest to that. He was in an accident and it was a. Somebody that didn't know that the road didn't, it wasn't a four-way stop. And if the the corner that I'm thinking of, I think there may be an issue with parking too, that people are parking too close to the corner.
Yeah.
So we might need to restrict the parking up close that corner. On High and Oak. We'll take a look at that as well because there's there's certain regulations for stop signs. How far off page of payment? How far to the bottom of the sign and everything and we'll we'll check that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Joe? Thank you. All right, Patrick, now it's your turn. Your quarterly report, Patrick.
Uh, Tim Rutherford from NASA Neighborhood gets such abuse. We we're the one of the few. Uh municipalities in the county that doesn't have a prescription Dropbox. He went to the county commissioner to request. Uh, that we get one. It's like I say, they service it. They do everything with it. They send an officer by to clean it out. Uh, we just need to find a space. Joe and I are gonna work on that to try to find something with a camera view and and all that. Um, there are Hancock County Team Police Academy flyers in the back for anyone that is interested in having kids go to the Team Police Academy. A daughter attended it last year. She had a blast. Um, you learn about law enforcement and the whole and a lot of demonstrations. They did some exercising and at the end of the week they get a. Pretty forget, they get their graduation day. Uh, yesterday we escorted Indiana Run for the Fallen. It was nice to see the American Legion, the fire department, everybody out there supporting um the cause. That was neat. Uh, I have a new officer. I'm finally up to full staff. One of the names, the name is Sanchez Williams. He came from Hendersonville, Kentucky. He was a certified officer down there for about five and a half years. Um, we're happy to have him. And he will start his training the beginning of next week to get his Indiana certifications. He will receive a waiver from the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. Um, he might have to take some online Indiana law and criminal law and traffic law classes. Um, but he will be getting waivers, so he'll have to send it to the cabinet. You know, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Sanchez Williams. Like he said, I'm from uh, Henderson, Kentucky, where I was an officer for five years. I'm originally from Mississippi, where I was born and raised. And um, I moved to Kentucky where I met my wife and. We lived there for a while and she says she wanted to be closer to family, which is at Fisher's Indiana. So. We did what the wife wanted and moved up here. Along the way, I found the city of Fortville. Where we, we, we come to love it, you know, we, we like the small town feel and it's not that far from Fisher's, so she can. Get to her sisters pretty quick. Um. But other than that, the town that I grew up in was called Newton, Mississippi. And this town reminds me of. A lot of it. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited to be a part of the community and uh, excited to be a part of the police department.
Thank you.
Nice to have you. Welcome.
Have you found a place to uh, move to yet though? In, in, in town or in the area?
Still, I like live on Stat Street.
All right, quarterly report. So I've attached our monthly training. Um, it is page three. We've gotten almost every officer to some sort of training so far in the first quarter. Um, whether it be firearms, traffic stops, training, Oscar Kestner completed his Indiana Law Enforcement Academy training. And less lethal training. Um, obviously Sergeant R for myself completed the street cup conference training. Uh, Officer Allen became a train to trainer for CIT. So we have someone that can assist in training all our officers in CIT. Which is good. So. Um, reserved for three hundred ninety-seven point one three hours for the first quarter. That was good. Normally we don't see that amount, but um. After team and his wife had his baby, so they. They filled in some and helped cover some shifts. Now our calls for service in January, we had eight hundred and ninety-eight. Which was up. February was about normal again to six ninety-one. Um, it being a Florida month, March, we're at nine, we're, we're at nine hundred and twenty-nine call with purpose. For thirty-one days and for um, April, we were over a thousand. And I continue to see that trending upwards with the new construction. The bypasses, the weather being warmer, more people being outside. Um, so I'm glad to have Sanchez with us because that'll help fill uh, one gap that we've had. Where we're running. For our officers a little bit. So I've attached all the tickets that we've issued so far this year. That is on, I don't know, one of the last few pages. There was fifty-eight total in those three months. Some of them were warnings, some of them were infraction, some of them were misdemeanors. Um, I didn't see any felonies. It's no right etiquette. It's like a felony OWI, but maybe there's one. That's about it. We're moving by a lot. Um, the second page you'll see is our activity, the citations. ODBs, traffic warnings, adult arrests, juvenile arrests, ODHS, drug arrests, warrant arrests. In our first. Order, we've arrested. About. Twenty percent more than we had at this time last year. Some of that is because of COVID, but a lot of it is um, our adult arrests, our drug arrests have gone up. We're working on that. We uh, getting ready to sign an M U within Hancock County. Uh, once I get it, I'll send it over to Alex to look at and all that, but uh. To get some of their drug detectives up here to, to help work on some cases. That's my goal. I don't like seeing drug arrests, drugs lead to thefts, lead to robberies, lead to break-ins. They've lead to a lot of stuff and that's where the bottom of it is. So our numbers are up. Um, it doesn't surprise me kind of COVID's over now. It's the first year that everybody's been out without masks and moving around in this and that. So um, and then the growth that the town's getting to. So I'm gonna continue to monitor it. We're gonna continue to do our best. Far as traffic, yes, I know we get traffic everywhere. I know we have speeding people everywhere. I am gonna put out that we're gonna have a blitz. Uh, traffic blitz for all officers to come in. I would like to pay the officers instead of them getting comp time because that will reduce. Their hours worked later in the year, which we may need them more later in the year as this progress goes on. So I am in a request from the council this evening if I could have um. Three thou, I have three thousand dollars in my overtime budget and I would like to do that for a traffic saving blitz, be able to pay the officer. That converted to comp. If you guys are willing to do that, I, I'm gonna put them out and just send them out. You're not even taking calls. You'll have your call takers that are. Covering their twenty-nine point seven calls a day. Um, you'll have those on separate details. These people are strictly just gonna run traffic in town. To handle planes on staff, handle semis to, to do all that. But I don't think it's fair to make them converted into comp time if I'm asking them to come in on their time off to do these things. Later down the road, it's just gonna compound and compound and compound until we can burn it all and we're losing the vacation time. So if you all are willing to do that, I'd like to be able to spend that out of my budget.
Okay. So uh, all the three thousand, so we're gonna pay them overtime pricing for that.
Yes, paid overtime cost their, their hourly rate times one point five.
Okay.
So if you guys are willing to do that, then I'll um. Manage their numbers. Till we get to our maximum. We'll go from there. We did get our bicycle service to Main Street in the neighborhood. You're gonna see bicycles out and about. Got a couple of guys really looking forward to doing that. Their bike certified, so.
Cool.
That's great.
Can do that. We have two or three people out. One guy's gonna hop on a bike and just go to the round. Can't stop a lot of cars, but it's good community service. Yeah. Right, that's the last line of duty death in Hancock County was an officer that got killed by a, uh, on a bike patrol.
Can I get a motion? For the three grand?
I make a motion to approve the three grand additional overtime for the blitz.
All in favor?
I oppose. The ice have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, he's not here tonight. We'll just uh, Adam, you have anything for us?
I don't have anything in particular, but if you have any questions on anything, I can try to address those.
Have you started the um. The software program?
Fireworks. We have not. Formally launched it. We would anticipate that would happen in. June or July. Um, right now, the company is currently taking some of our existing data. Converting it into the permanent software system. And they're also converting a number of our applications um. For use that people can fill those in online. So there's a lot, a lot of work uh, being done. I, I've been very happy uh, with their communication. We. Talked to them once a week, um, and they give us an update as to where they're at. They've been very productive. So, so far um, we're moving right on track.
Things.
Thank you. Yep. Oh, that, that I honestly don't know. Um, that would. That would have been done in coordination with the state as part of the project. Um. Yeah, I know, I, I understand. Um. I would say um, you could call the in dot customer service number. Do you have that handy?
My, my veteran, if you talk with Grant, I can hook you up with Grant is down there. Those are locates when they call them in. They're only good for twenty days.
Yeah.
And typically they paint and uh, flag them. So even if you remove them, which I don't think you're supposed to, um. They'll have, they'll be, they'll be right after putting them back in again.
Right.
Because they're only good for twenty days after keep up and them up. Yeah. But if you, if you talk with uh, if you talk with Grant, if that's something that they're calling and locates on. Uh, if they're calling in sections instead of just the whole corridor, if they're done in that area, maybe they will leave that area out and not call it in anymore till they're. Ready to go back to that area. And that way maybe you can kind of keep that. Cleaned up.
I've, I've lived out there for. Eight, almost eighteen years. I just remove them, mow my grass. Cause they technically, they're gonna be digging over there in the next day. They're gonna remark all that. They're just, they're just constantly marking that. They'll mark it every, every two or three days that they have to. I'm not telling people. What I'm saying is if, if they're gonna, if they're gonna market, they're gonna, they're gonna do their digging that next day if there's gonna be something going on, but. Those marks, most, lots of times they mark that and nothing's being done.
Yeah.
Trust me, they'll, they'll remark it. Um, Adam, is any more questions for Adam? Okay. Uh, Missy's not here. Alex, you have anything for us?
I don't, unless you have questions for me.
Nope. I don't.
Uh, public comment. Come on up, Andrew.
Uh, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Andrew Terminstein. I'm new to the community. This was here almost exactly one month ago. Um, lock I heard tonight uh, falls in line with. What I want to bring to the attention of the council. I heard the need to enforce ordinances. Uh, the desire to improve. The downtown area to make it more aesthetically pleasing. I also heard uh, the concern for criminal uh, activity, drug use, things of that nature. Um, code ordinances. So I'm new to the community. I moved into Timber Ridge. I'm on the outskirts of it. And there's a lot of. Areas on the outskirts of downtown. With tall grass, very tall grass, excessive tall grass, excessive overgrowth. Broken down vehicles. Not in a parking lot, not in a driveway, but in yards. Uh, junk, trash, debris scattered about in people's yards. Behind their properties. Um, I moved here with the hopes of uh. Flourishing with the community. Growing. My house is an investment. What's being done?
Well, we just hired uh, Jerry, a new building sprayer. He is going around cite, uh, citating people right now.
I've been in constant communication with Jerry. Jerry's overwhelmed. Jerry is one man.
Right.
And I think this job is too much for one guy. That's just my opinion.
Right.
Throwing it out there. Um, there's a lot that needs to be done. My concern is properties that are near mine. Uh, you know, when you allow property to deteriorate, there's gonna be that. Potential for other things to happen. Criminal activity. When houses are allowed to deteriorate and collapse, and I know of two properties, and I'm, I'll get with you, Patrick. Where I see it as a safety concern. I know one property where a porch is actually collapsing. Another property where a shed is in the backyard that's fallen down. These are concerns. And uh, you know, I understand there's a process. And I am all about following the process. But sometimes there needs to be more stringent enforcement. And, and again, I want to flourish with the community. I know Fortville's moving in the right direction. Everything's coming this way, but for us to really step it up and move in that direction. I think there's a lot still that needs to be done. And I know it's not gonna be done overnight, but I just want to bring it to your attention that it is a concern of mine. And uh, I'm not gonna go away.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrick, I'll get with you later.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up.
Hello, my name's Nikki Carr. I live on seven, six, nine Berkeley Drive in Helmscrest. And it's my first meeting here, so so glad to see you all. Um, I, I remember hearing the discussion about replacing the trees that are dying. And it's such a simple thing compared to all of the other things going on in Fortville, but I would love for you to consider. Um, having some native trees for Indiana and avoiding all of the invasive trees like the Bradford pear. So. Simple, but feedback.
That's in our, that's in our comprehensive plan anyway, I think.
Yeah, we don't plant.
The types of trees that we plant.
We don't plant pear trees anymore. In fact, we take them down as soon as we can anymore.
Yeah, in fact, the, the good news is that in our um, zoning ordinance. Um, we have a list of. Prohibited species. In fact, that list uh, earlier this year was recently updated. So there were about five species or, or so that were. Moved into the prohibited species list. Um, so definitely for new development. Um, every time a commercial project comes in, we always um. Take a look at it, at their landscape plan against that list. So it's always important that we uh, keep that up to date. Um, so. And then as Joe mentioned, for some of the existing trees, they, they do. We do take them down.
Mm-hmm.
As.
That's awesome.
So there's always, always room for improvement, that's for sure. But um, the good news is that. Feel comfortable that we're, we're in a good spot on that.
Awesome. And I know the Hancock County um, Gardening Association probably would be able to. Help with direction on types of trees. That would be really great for the area or be able to direct you in the right, you know, place. So.
You know, um, lastly and quickly on that subject. There is um, a huge amount of grant money that the federal government. Um, has available, I think, as part of that last. Federal, huge federal inflation bill. Um, there's a, a, a massive amount nationwide and we've contacted the. Um, Anderson Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, MCOC as they're called. Uh, because they had reached out, they had reached out to us at one point, said if we were interested in doing a um, street tree. Plating grant. Um, again, it's a big priority that they're trying to do at the federal level. So. Um, that is something that we've communicated with them about and hopefully we could. Uh, look to apply for that grant soon. That we could get some more, more street trees in the public right away.
Awesome. That sounds great.
Yeah, I think they have actually turned in the application. It's more of a uh. Community, the more communities they can get to partner together to get that grant. So a lot of us have been talking and then they submitted the initial, you know. Application, I guess, to see if, if it was gonna be a possibility. And then before we actually. Go through with the grant, we have to come back before the council, obviously, to make sure that uh, and I don't know why they would say no, but. That's just part of our requirements. Council has to bless and retain and we say, send it off and let's see if we can. Plant some trees.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Uh, town council, Libby?
Big, uh, Tanya?
I said it all.
Becky?
Nothing.
Brian?
No, thank you.
The only comment that I have is on the uh, building uh, fees and structures back at the. Two thousand fourteen, when we wrote the comprehensive plan, we kind of wrote it for um. We thought that uh, there was gonna be more. Building on Broadway where it's gonna be taller structures and, and where we're, now we're finding out that. It's not working out that way. Nobody's buying up large sections. And we have a lot of little businesses along the way, like Aaron Bale. He's got Napa, he's got those three other little buildings and then. Across the street. So it's not working out. So I just, it seemed when, when um. When, when we wanted to put a sign up for our, for the gas station. It seemed kind of high, four doll, four hundred dollars for a variance. And then a gas station's paying three hundred dollars. It's gonna be. You know, a, a pretty large project there. We're only talking about a small project that's hanging signing. And on a building. It's just. I just wanted to know, are we still working on the comp plan? To look at that again for the neighborhoods and along Broadway?
Well, uh.
Well, um, a couple of things. It's worth um, reminding everybody that in in the public, because this is a um, very common thing to mix up the the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance establishes and regulates what you can do with your land today and how it's zoned. And then the comprehensive plan is more of a a policy guidance document on if there are re-zonings or opportunities for change in the future. So the um, fee schedule is uh, was implemented in twenty twenty as part of the zoning ordinance when we took that from Hancock County. Um, when we put the fee structure in place, it was of course required and it was adopted by council for all the various fees. The 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 thinking at the time was really from a staff perspective and at least council at the time, I think, agreed with this philosophy is that for permits that touch everyday residents, whether it's an easement encroachment, whether it's a simple remodel permit, a pool permit, things like that. We wanted to keep those fees low. Um, which is why almost all of those fees are only fifty dollars, which are much lower than frankly, our peer communities. And that leads to my second point on fees in general is that we did want to see what our neighboring communities were doing. Whether that was Pendleton, McCordville, and to a certain extent Fishers, but really like communities as um, we were looking at. And and I guess lastly, on the general fee structure is frankly, certain fees that um, were being paid by out of town developers, whether it's Indianapolis, anywhere out of town. Um, and things that would take a lot of work uh, involving a new plan due to development, reviewing those. We wanted to make sure that um, those fees were commensurate the amount of time that staff spends. So with the variance fee specifically per that email that I had sent out, um, certainly the council can can change that at their pleasure as to what you'd like to do. Um, though in researching the other peer communities lately as to what they're charging, it seemed like those amounts were right on target with some of the peer communities for variances. And in the case of a special exception. Um, and lastly, just one other point from a staff perspective on fees is that um, keep in mind that for any fees that are charged, um, it does the user, uh, the person who is requesting a permit of variance, whatever it is. Um, certainly the the more that they can pay um, will that that they can pay means that for time that whether if it's occupying my time or Joe's time, frankly, it's it's they're paying for that as opposed to other taxpayers subsidizing that through the general fund. But uh, the bottom line is uh, to be very clear is that um, we always want to make sure that our fees are fair and that again, especially those ones that touch residents uh, very frequently that um, those are low. So um, but if you wanted to revisit any of those fees, it's certainly within your purview um, to do that.
I can chime in as somebody who, when I'm not up here doing this, I do a fair amount of zoning work around the area around the state and I would say that Adam's exactly right. And if anything, the town's fees are below the average for peer communities. And if you think about non-peer communities, city of Indianapolis, um, the standard variance is non, I mean, it's depending on which kind you're going for, whether it's a use variance or design standards, it's anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars as a start and it's non-refundable.
Right.
So I mean.
Guys, I guys, I understand all this. Okay, trust me. But when you're putting up a sign and then it's almost like you got to fit in with in this box. Or they that the fees on it, like I told my, I was like four hundred dollars. My brother's like, how do I get into in that? But it almost stifles creativity and making something a little bit nicer. But it doesn't give you any wiggle room on that zoning. So why does it have to be on the building, the sign? Why does that have to be attached to the building?
That's what I was going to ask.
That's a sign.
Yeah.
Where did? Sign regulation. That's our sign.
Variance and and just specifically his case.
So in 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 Fritz's case, from what I recall is the problem is that it's um, it's a sign that would be attached to a light pole, which is basically a pole sign. And that's something that um, both the town and the county, when they used to regulate Fortville years ago, um, had restricted out pole signs for aesthetic reasons in the corridor, really townwide. Uh, but it started with the Broadway corridor. What you could do in your particular case that um, might a achieve your goal is if you uh, attach, are you able to attach the sign?
To attach a pole to the building.
Yeah, if you did that.
Um, but there again, it just.
Sign.
Yeah. Well, see, I took down my, see what 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 I was, when I bought the gas station, I took down my pole sign that I had out there by the highway.
Right.
Because I wanted to fall into compliance, but I still see people, buildings that haven't done anything. They still have their pole signs up. And I'm thinking, why did I even take mine down in the first place if nobody else is taking theirs down? So wait a minute, wait a minute. But then um, I was going to repurpose a light that's been there for since the fifties. So I was going to make it something, you know, kind of unique and different. But our sign um, I don't know what we call it, ordinance or is it, it's just kind of restrictive, even though we don't want to be Fishers. We don't want to be Carmel. We we kind of want to keep that uniqueness going down Broadway. And we're finding out that now that the the big twenty fourteen that we were to have these tall buildings, we're finding out that the hardware store, the old har- uh, Mr. Marble sold and now it's repurposed. It's a repurposed building. Same thing what Vale is doing down there. He's going to repurpose those three buildings. He's not going to tear them down or anything. So there has to be some kind of, I don't know, wiggle room to make it look like we're not really Fishers, but we're really an older town that's got some uniqueness to it.
Yeah, and certainly um, you know, regulation of of signage and Alex can attest to this. There it's it's challenging. Um, there's a ton of law on it. There's a ton of um, regulations. Some of them are i- in my view, go above and beyond what you even need to regulate. Frankly, in terms of even of aesthetics. But what I would say is in your particular case, obviously from a planning perspective, I have no no issue with it whatsoever. If if I had the authority to approve it, I would. I don't though.
I know.
So so unfortunately, um, it's really a safeguard for really other property owners in the public that if I don't have the authority to do it, that it's in public and it goes through the B Z A um, as part of the process. So certainly it's nothing. I like I said, I think it's a cool sign. I just don't have that authority to approve it.
Right. I just wanted to bring it to attention.
So does everybody that comes to the town for a variance have to pay that four hundred dollars?
If it's a commercial variance, yes.
Oh, just commercial.
If it's a residential variance, let's say you wanted to build a um, a a a structure, a garage closer to the property line than than is required. Um, that would be a two hundred dollar fee for that. Um, the the other thing too, the the last point, just so you understand on the uh, variance fees for commercial variances, there's a lot of the pure communities. They would charge, there's a base fee, which might be two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars for commercial, but then they charge per variance. So every little line item of the code that you vary from, you got to pay an additional two hundred dollars. I always thought that was punitive and also a lot of times you don't know because the code can be complicated. You don't know exactly how many uh, particular line items they're going to be varying from. And so um, as you know, for a lot of those B Z A cases, it could be common for them to have, you know, three or or five different technical provisions of the code that they're varying from just to just to do something fairly simple. So that's why we we structured it as just doing a a simple flat fee rather than per line item in in the code.
Okay. I want to add too, if I can, I know when uh, when we put the design standards together for the old town, the community and everything, and then the sign standards the way they are. But it's because that's what the committee or the, you know, everybody that worked on those standards. So this is kind of what we want the community to look like. If these other signs are going to be permitted, they need to go through the variance process and everything. But what ends up happening is if if you find out that you've got your standard, but yet we keep going back for variance for the same type of thing, then we need to change that standard and maybe include that. Because if there is a variance and you grant it, then once you've done it so many times, you've changed the whole look of the standard anyway. So then that's time to maybe go back and look at those standards and change.
Well, that's why I think we need to go back and look at it because when we wrote that back in two thousand fourteen, we didn't realize that the ground's all contaminated. There's a lot of issues on Broadway that makes it not feasible for a company to come in, or they would have already bought up those swaps.
And we've done any other variances for a sign like a pole sign, Tom? Kind of like what he's looking for.
Um, probably not because my my gas station is unique. It's it's set back. And there's really not a lot of space to put a sign on it because it's got all windows. Um, and it just makes it tough, but I need to fill out a sign permit anyway because we hung one uh, in between those two Bs. So I need to come in at least pay for that. That's attached to the building.
Yeah, so you know, and um, if it does go to the B Z A, if that's all right, you want to take, obviously have to be careful what I say because it's a it's a B Z A case, quasi judicial case under state law, but um, you know, I I what I would say is that um, one way when we talk about the height of signs that we tried to be more flexible than other communities is you'll notice in some of the suburban communities, whether it's Carmel, Fishers, even McCordville, I think, they they'll be on, it'll be on a somewhat of a suburban corridor, at least an auto oriented corridor, and they'll have signs that are like four feet off the ground and they have huge bushes in front of it and you can't even read the sign. Um, what we did is we did allow for more height than a lot of other communities do. So for example, I think we allowed up to I would say twelve or fifteen feet. Kind of the good example is um, the Three Rivers sign that's out there. It's a nice sign. It's it's a monument sign, but it is a little bit higher and easier to read for people that are driving. So we did try to hit the sweet spot, but I I guess um, in closing on this is um, certainly if you have unique circumstances, unique architecture, um, those are all in general, different things that uh, that's why we do have that variance process on different one-off cases for the board to consider. So I under- I understand the the frustration that's.
No, I just, it just shocked me that the it's it it at first it seemed like more of a penalty that you're not fitting within the, at that night, it was like, man, they got me blocked in three ways to something. And I did, it it just uh, but I'm all right with it. It's I'm fine. I'm fine. I just, at that night, it just uh, you want to be a little bit different, but then you're constrained by all these rules and stuff. I understand. I understand. Okay, uh, that's all I've got. And then approval, uh, can I get a motion to approve the vouchers?
Make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn at eight forty two.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Libby's already leaving. Thank you. Thanks, everybody for coming out.